Seven o'clock. I always meeting the order, please join in the pledge. Okay, are there any additions or directions to the agenda that you think?
Mr. Chair, there are under two on new business, letter G. Doctor resignation received Friday, August fourth, twenty twenty-three, Southeast Schools, Dean of Students and Activity Director Matt.
Thank you. And we need to adopt the agenda with the additions. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
There's second. Sorging. Any discussion? All those in favor of adopting the agenda presented before us this evening, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? I didn't carry his. Letter B, a book forum. Please remember, there's a five-minute time limit. And the first one is Rebecca Cohort.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. So in May, we the the board voted on the four-day schoolwork with week after much discussion. And public, lack of public comment. Many people said, oh, yeah, we've got all the problems ironed out, including the after-school program. Is that we were assured there was plenty of room, that the funding was secured, and we were good to go. Following that, I spoke directly to the after-care person that does it in Lingle. I've known her for years. And was told that, well, we may not have enough room for everyone. Because you see, obviously, if they don't have the staff, they can't have the kids. And if they don't have the kids, they don't need the staff. So they were gonna have to wait and see if they would have room for additional children. I specifically brought up my daughter and was told that likely my child who's on IP would not be accepted, which I found very strange, and I wanted to have more information. So I waited, I was told that they would get back to me. And I waited, and no one got back to me. Then I spoke to the superintendent, and he says that, so strange, I'll check into that, I'll have someone get back to you. I was in June. In July, that's so strange, I'll have someone get back to you. I was in, now it's August, and no one has gotten back to me, no one has given me an email. Now, school's supposed to start, and this is what I have found out about the after-school program. Apparently, there is enrollment, but only for the returning student. And then it opens to their family. And then they open it up in some kind of apparently secret way, because it's not made public. I was supposed to receive an email, which I have not. It's supposed to go out in the school news later, which the school news blast email, which it has not. I checked my email frequently. I have not received it. I have received no phone call. I don't know what's going on, but I was assured there would be room for my children in this after-school program as I have to work on Fridays, and that was one of the guarantees made when we were adopting the four-day school week. So this is my action as of tonight. Today is Tuesday. If I do not receive a phone call from these people by Friday, there will be a lawsuit of discrimination against for my child, who is special needs, against somebody. I don't know who, but I guarantee it'll be broad enough that it'll capture the responsible party. This was guaranteed. This service was guaranteed for parents of who have to work and their kids need supervision. So maybe you all want to make a phone call and check into that to see if this is district-wide. I don't know if this is a one-case-off thing, or if this is district-wide, but if this is a district-wide thing, I'd say somebody lied, and somebody got made a fool of. I don't know who it is, but I'd be checking that out if I were you. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Mr. Frankie here.
My name is Frankie here, I live here in Torrington, but I'm gonna talk to you for just a few minutes about the two exhibits you had in the Gosha County Parade last Thursday. I don't know how many of you made it to the parade, but you had two floats, two school buses. And the first school bus is a big one. I don't know how many passengers, but it said school, but we need school bus drivers. And the second school bus had a big banner alongside of it, and it said, we need substitute teachers. And I thought, that's that's something you should be thankful that you had that opportunity to advertise to the people, but as I understand it, this school district has a policy, and in fact, right now, that you cannot submit a hard copy of either resume or a application for employment, either walking through the front door in person or by mail. It must be done online. And that's the only way, whether it's a teacher, a coach, a bus driver, a custodian, anything, you have to be online. And I think that's that's kind of backward. You should, I think, make it easy and convenient for as many people as possible to submit an application for employment if they so desire. You're in the people business, the little bit of people to great big people. And it's very important, I think, and they are impressionable, very important, I think, that they get the impression that you are going every single possible way you can to get the best equipment and the best people to operate that equipment to make this school district better in every way, and therefore the community. So I am asking you tonight, if possible, to simply make a resolution or in some way to expand the manner in which people can apply for employment here at the school district by either hard copy, walking through the front door and laying it on the desk, or mailing it in to you, and not just confine it only to online. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move down to letter C, information and proposals. Number one is information for Project Aware Coordinator Christina Bullington.
So Christina submitted the memo in there, but I am going to field the question to provide information. As you'll see, as part of the handout, the Wyoming Project Aware Student Survey. Our plan is to provide this survey for fifth, seventh, ninth, and eleventh graders. This is to create a baseline in regards to the data for Project Aware. This survey would be done one time per year, so in September during the life of the grant. Many of the questions are asked in other surveys. You'll notice that they were very similar in regards to, for instance, on the elementary survey on number three, an adult I know really cares about me. This is a question students are rarely regularly asked to determine how much involvement they they find from staff. And so what we plan to do is in fifth and seventh grade, it is an opt-in survey, which means that those students who return the permission slip will be completing the survey at those grade levels. Then in ninth and eleventh grade, it is opt-out survey, which means that information will be sent home, and those students who wish to not participate would then opt out of the survey. I can answer any additional questions that anyone might have related to the survey as stated before, reference to a baseline for Project Aware to determine the success of that program. Questions?
Not difficult.
Hey. We will move down to number two, which is introductions of our new district administrations.
I can have all three of them just come up here so we can introduce you. I know where you're seated is a little bit more difficult, but. Mike, you don't get honest. If you could just quickly say your name and what position you are with the districts, just so these board members can match a face with a name as they approve the contracts earlier in the school or earlier this year.
I'm Cynthia Porter, I'm a principal at Torrington High School.
I'm Lena Swingle, I'm a principal at Lincoln Elementary.
Thought Warner, Transportation Secretary.
Ramona Moody, Heat Service Director.
James Catlin, Florence Middle School.
Mike Harpers, Technology Director.
So very fortunate to have some big shoes to fill in multiple positions, but some really great people, really excited about them starting, getting on board. It's we've had the opportunity to get started, and I've had I think every one of us has had an individual meeting about a burning question already, you have an idea meeting, so you've already trialed by fire very quickly. You're not in in your position so far in this school. Board members, do you have any questions for any of our new directors and principals?
The questions, they're welcome, welcome.
They give the job.
Thank you, guys, we appreciate it.
Okay, we'll move down to letter B, recommended actions. Number one is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that any member wishes to pull? All those in favor of approving the, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda this evening?
Remove.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda this evening, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? I didn't carry this. Number two, new business. Letter A, consider approval of intergovernmental agreement with the City of Torrington, Torrington Police Department for School Resource Officer. Your recommendation is to approve the agreement with the City of Torrington, Torrington Police Department to provide a one-half time to twenty hours per week School Resource Officer for Southeast Schools, LaGrange Elementary, as presented for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Do I have a motion?
I still move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the intergovernmental agreement with the State of Torrington and Torrington Police Department for School Resource Officer, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? I didn't carry this. Letter B is consider approval of contracting for district staff professional development services. Your recommendation is to approve contracting with region five focuses for forty-three days of onsite district staff professional development services for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, including leadership coaching in the total amount of fifty-two thousand dollars funded through Title One and Title Two. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Sorging.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving contracting for district staff professional development services with region five focuses in the amount of fifty-two thousand dollars, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? I didn't carry this. Letter C, consider approval of building portions of student handbooks. The recommendation is to approve the student handbooks as presented from Lingle Elementary, Trail Elementary, Torrington Middle School, Torrington High School, Black River School, Lingle Elementary, Lingle Middle and High School, Southeast Schools, and LaGrange Elementary. The handbooks will be emailed to the board. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
There's second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the building portions of student handbooks, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? I didn't carry this. Letter D, consider approval of district student activity handbook. Their recommendation is to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four district student activity handbook as presented. Do I have a motion?
So.
There's second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the district student activity handbook, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? I didn't carry this. Letter E, consider approval of athletic training and sports medicine services agreement. Their recommendation is to approve contracting of North Platte Physical Therapy for Student Athletic Training and Sports Medicine Services for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Do I have a motion?
I still move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Is the plan for them to continue to, similar to what it was last year, as part of the games and contracts are pretty much the same?
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving athletic training and sports medicine services agreement, North Platte Physical Therapy for the twenty-three, twenty-four school of the year, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? I didn't carry this. Letter F, consider approval of purchase exceeding five thousand dollars for the purchase of building door closures. The recommendation is to approve the purchase of fifty door closers for Lingle Fort Larnaby High School from Annexter in the total amount of sixteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty cents. This is required by the WDB ADA audit funded by major maintenance. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Sorging.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the purchase exceeding five thousand dollars for fifty door closers for Lingle Fort Larnaby High School in the amount of sixteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty cents, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? I didn't carry this. Letter G, accept resignation received Friday, August fourth, twenty twenty-three from Southeast Schools, Lingle Student and Activity Director Matt Bullington. Do I have a motion?
Go on, let's.
There's second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of accepting the resignation by Dean of Students and Activity Director Matt Bullington at Southeast High School, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? I didn't carry this.
Mr. Chair, can I go back to item N? On the door closures?
Sure.
I just, I just want to share real quick. This, this is an expense that we're gonna see at the other two high schools, and I don't like just coming with with one price, but we can't find another vendor that will provide these. The State Department of Education was here from the Perkins Department, and they were looking at the vocational education at the secondary level. And one of the things that Lingle in particular had a lot of, they, they were looking at the weight of the doors. And in particular, like if a student were in a wheelchair, whether they'd be able to open that door or not. And so that's what this, this is doing is loosening some of that tension, if you will, and lightening the load on the door. But I just wanted you to be aware that this is one of the three high schools that we're, we're doing at the school at the time. The major maintenance is paying for the, for the closures and district maintenance will do the stuff.
Thank you. Letter E, topics for discussion. Any board member have anything they wish to discuss?
I had a thought for just propose a topic maybe for next month. And this to give maybe all of us a second to think about it, but I think it'd be helpful if we had a, just a casual conversation next month on why each of us wanted to become a school board. So if anybody's willing to share that next month, I think it would be the
Anything else? So I actually have something I am would like to figure out a way to do more indie roundtables. Similar to the ones that we did or had when we were looking into the four-day school week and some other things. And I would, I'd like to structure it similarly to how that was where we went to the individual schools. Not every, obviously, board member, but we get a few board members there. But I'd like to look into that moving into the future so that we can interact with community members more, have more discussions with them. Because a lot of times, this is the only interaction we have, so some of the thinking about the future.
So is your plan to, okay, and I know that you just threw it out as, as, you know, a thought for is your plan to set a timeline? Is your plan to actually talk with others to decide topics, or how's that?
So I, I would like to set a timeline. I don't necessarily, I mean, we don't need to do that tonight, but I would like to get together to where we can have, you know, three board members present, and we can do like, like we did last time where we had one at Southeast, one at Lingle. I think we have one at Torrington High School. Did we have one anywhere else?
That's true.
For trade, I'll try them, okay. I, I would like to structure it similar to that, Carlos. And, and then we, we can just get more community involvement and have ourselves more involved in the community as well. So any suggestions or anything like that, more than welcome. This is something I would like to start doing more of.
So do we, and again, this is a little bit off, but do we have an idea of dates for strategic planning with?
I'm updating for during my super advanced report, if that's, or I can answer it now.
That's fine.
I'll be avoiding.
I just didn't know if that would actually coincide in some sort or in some way to what he was actually talking about, yeah.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Okay. Letter F is future meetings. Uh number one, the annual back-to-school staff in-service will be on Wednesday, August sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three, at eight AM at the THS auditorium, followed by lunch for employees and families at TMS. Uh number two, the WSBA Regional Call Meeting will be hosted by Commerce County School District and Douglas on the evening of August or Thursday, August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. And number three, the next regular board meeting will be Tuesday, September twelfth at seven PM. And with that, I will turn it over to the superintendent. Thank you. Update on district staffing hires. Uh we did have uh pass for resignations. I think we do have another certified staff member that we will be looking to fill. Uh we've had uh some movement on our qualified staff and looking to be a good position to collect those. We are having some that are added as we kind of progress to summer, which is typical. Uh we have seen a, a good pool of applicants. I do believe that is in reference to our salary and benefits package uh that we approved in the spring. It has been conducive to recruiting uh and especially in the area of hourly employees. So I think that that is a, a big impact for us as we move into just next week where we have uh students starting on the twenty-first. Uh Thursday and Friday of last week, the uh administrative team and myself attended the Leadership and Law Conference in Laramie. Uh it was a very well-attended conference and provided us a lot of good information related to that. Uh board members, it is every two years during that time. I know with their busy schedules, it's sometimes uh hard to, to make those trainings. But if you ever do have an opportunity, it is very interesting. One of the most interesting facets of that is they go through on the last day a mock trial. And so they have two uh lawyers actually arguing and trying to make it as realistic as possible. They did at the end explain to us how kind of unrealistic it is because they're only prepping for about forty-five minutes. And the reality, they're prepping for, you know, six months on the court case that would be uh and go to trial like that. But it is very interesting, even the, the questions that are asked and how somebody on the stand reacts. And then they explain what kind of cues then they go through in that process. Uh it is very interesting, even if you would only want to come for that second half day, you're certainly welcome to. Well, they have two keynotes on the start of the first day and then they go off the breakout sessions in which they have specific topics. Many of the topics are related to many of the legal cases currently uh happening in Wyoming and across the US related to that. Uh I, I, I did not, did not hear anything that uh really set apart, but it is something I think as we look at different cases around the state. Uh what they've found, I think even more so in my career of the last twenty-five years, we found so many unique situations that don't have case law to really give us an example where in past precedent, there's been so much case laws. They're all so unique and waiting for that case to go to court is what we're kind of the process, uh which will provide many guiding principles, along with legislative session and how some of those rules that have yet to be challenged will most likely be challenged in the upcoming months uh related to cases that will be forthcoming. Along the same lines, uh Wyoming School Association led that conference or in conjunction of different organizations, but I had an opportunity to speak with Brian Farmer, uh who we talked about the schedule planning process. They do have a, a plan in place uh that kind of cooperates with your planning along with some board governance work that they felt uh they would like to propose to us. I will share that proposal uh with board members and it's, I hope, either uh late August or early September uh to have a work session uh along those lines. One of the things we might do as we're talking about your items is maybe hold a work session at Southeast or Lingle and then either before or after have that in conjunction with a listening session. Uh that way we can, we can have two processes and one, as I know, more nights it tends to have uh the availability of new job schedules and different events that you have. Uh but that would be an idea to hopefully be able to consolidate those for the season. The other one that I had was um recently, Marcy uh has made me aware of a legend, in twenty-twenty-two, the legislature passed, led a legislature, passed a law that requires training for public officers and governing bodies uh with oversight over the personal responsible for handling the councilor office. At that time, uh Wyoming School Association did not perceive that this law applied to school board members because that, because of the way the law was written. But recently, the Department of Audit uh probably, probably gave rules related to this statutory change and began training for those impacted by the law. Now, again, the question of whether it applies to school boards was raised. After they consulted with legal counsel and the Department of Audit, um the Wyoming School Association is, is encouraging all Wyoming School Board members to receive an approved training. Now, they are working with the Department of Audit to develop a training that is specific to school districts. And at that time, there are a number of approved training courses primarily through the Department of Audit or the Wyoming Association of Municipalities, but none of these are designed with schools in mind. Um while they encourage board members to attend the training by Wyoming School Association, there are a few things you should know. All board members will need to receive the training by June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-four. Uh and WSB, as I referenced before, is developing a course that will be available in various sites around Wyoming and virtually. They anticipate offering courses starting in September or October. And as we get information, uh we will share that. That also includes members of our rep board uh who will also need to take that course. In reference to that, uh we did receive an email this morning that the um Department of Audit does have a training uh that is available right now uh and one in Gillette and one in Douglas. Excuse me, no, I apologize, that isn't correct. That was in the that's the other conference. This one is with the Department of Audit. And this is the public officer training and they will be offering uh that training on August twenty-third. But they're calling it a virtual training at the courthouse. I didn't quite understand that word. Marcy?
The, they, they've done one training. I, I have not participated yet. This one on August twenty-third is, is being held in Cheyenne, but they're also offering a virtual option that um what, what has been shared with me and, and I have to um participate in this based upon the board appointing me as a representative to the school risk retention board. That um they're, they're talking of it being what's here right now is a day-long training, what they think an hour and a half or launch. But the county courthouse is um extending the opportunity and people want to participate virtually from Torrington in, in a group setting.
So that, that option, if you are interested in that, please let me know. It is from nine to five on August twenty-third with a ninety-minute lunch. I would have a tendency to wait until Wyoming School Board Association offers their training as that might be much more aligned to what school board members will need as opposed to municipalities. But if you do have an interest in there, uh we will keep you updated as those trainings are available. Uh but this would be something that we need to have accomplished before June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-four.
What are the repercussions if a public officer doesn't participate in that training?
Great question. I have not, I have not uh asked that. Marcy, have you guessed, guessed this one out?
Um if you go out to um Department of Audit, State of Wyoming, there's a, a public funds division and um they have, they have some information there. But um they, they are going, they, they have a couple of exceptions. Um one being a bachelor's degree in accounting or finance allowing an exemption. But um they, they do make some references to the, the timeline and, and how they're going to track that um the training has been completed.
Thank you, I do have just one. I, I was working on uh just some updates as we had a public comment related to the question of after school. Uh the the, the survey was open from June twenty-sixth until July seventh. It was on the Lingle Facebook page. The link was also sent out on the Lingle Band Parents Group and also on the practice programs, remind, was all set up in those three locations. I did not, I was not able to get specific numbers as to the results and how many returned that survey. Uh we were informed that they did have sufficient information regarding them. There, we are still, and now I have conducted meetings uh with the practice program just last week. And I know Mr. Neil Christ also has a meeting scheduled that was prior to anything scheduled for tomorrow. So we are keeping updated with them, providing services to those that are needing it. One of the biggest pieces is uh realizing that there needs to be numbers, not only to support program and just not necessarily one individuals or individuals in relation to that. Also, one thing to take note is school districts and other entities are responsible for following individualized education plans. The practice program, which is not an entity of the school district, is not responsible for following someone's individualized education plan. There may be meetings that are conducted to find out the services that a student or individual might require, but that does not mean that any, any individualized education plan written in the K through twelve environment would be required to be followed by a practice program uh after school, such as that. So that's one key thing that is important to note. I will provide as I get more information because it's, it's very difficult as you get those questions uh in that evening to have an answer within a half hour. So I will gladly get the board updated in regards to the numbers of surveys that we'll return uh to make that, to get that information. That is everything. That is everything I have. That's okay, with that, merger.